Back on the saddle again. Is it in the saddle, on the saddle again? Okay, good evening to everybody that's watching us from home. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Could everybody join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on, we don't have any adjustments. Next item is approval of minutes. We have Tuesday, June 4th, executive session at 12:00 PM. Thursday, June 13th, executive session at 4:00 PM. Thursday, June 13th, executive session at 5:00 PM. Again, Thursday, June 13th, executive session 5:30 PM. Thursday, June 13th, regular meeting 6:30 PM. And Monday, July 8th, executive session 12:00 PM.
I just make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All in favor?
All in favor.
Do we have any public comments? Nobody? Okay. Thank you very much. We don't have any communications, no committee reports as of yet. Superintendent's report.
Sure, good evening. Want to start with giving everyone a hiring update. First, I'd like to thank all of our schools and our administrators and their various hiring committees as a lot of hiring has taken place over the summer. You'll see that later in the agenda when we have, when I make those announcements officially. We did hold a career fair for the Sanford School Department recently. We held that over at Willard School with Sanford Community Adult Education. And it was a very successful fair. We had a pretty good turnout. The focus there for us was ed techs primarily because out of the remaining positions that we do have, a number of them are ed tech positions, supporting students. And so that went very well. We're in the process now of doing background checks and for those situations. And so I expect us to continue to fill that. We were able to fill two more today. We still have some remaining. There are a couple of positions that still remain open. One is a science teacher position at Sanford High School. We did, had offered that position to a candidate a couple of weeks ago. That candidate had accepted the position, but we did find out last week that the candidate was not able to accept the position. And so that position remains open. We're continuing looking to fill that. We also had a special education position at Sanford Middle School, a late resignation as that teacher had to relocate back to Massachusetts. So that too remains open. We also have a couple of school psychologist positions that are open. We continue to be able to look to fill those. The advantage we have there is we do now have the flexibility and latitude, if needed to, to have contract services with those positions. So I do remain optimistic and confident that we are going to be in good shape. Once again, I want to thank all of our administrators and hiring committees who've put in a lot of time and a lot of work to be able to do that. So feeling pretty good about where we are on August 19th, that I think we're going to be all set and hopefully ready to go on the first day of school on September 3rd. Any questions on the hiring update? Okay, next, I wanted to give an update on the Sanford School Department goals for 2024, 2025, as well as the school committee goal-setting workshop that we held recently. We held that last Thursday. Just to give everyone an update on our process, at the end of last school year, we have an administrative team meeting with our principals, assistant principals, directors, assistant directors, like we do every year. And we use that time to reflect on the previous school year. We also review a lot of data. We review our goals that we had set for the 2023, 2024 year. That work is used for the preliminary work for our goal-setting. For that, I think if we could put those up on the screen. There they are. Our, these are our overarching goals for the school committee. They are in our three areas. We call them our student pillar, pillars for student success. Those pillars are student achievement, school climate and culture, and capacity building. One of the things we do is we review as we try to set the goal-setting. These are overarching goals that we can use to have all of our various schools and departments align their goals in certain ways to this area. The first one is our pillar of student achievement. A big focus for this upcoming year is maximizing instructional time. We noticed that over, as we've returned back from the pandemic, we've been making progress, but our students are probably overall still behind. So that's important for us to make sure that we are using our instructional time, maximizing that. We also want to make sure that the work that we're doing is research-based and best instructional practices. We want to also put a big focus on engaging, engagement on those opportunities because our goal is to achieve one year plus when it comes to the academic growth that we have. We've always been looking to meet students where they are to have one-year growth. This year, we'd like to be able to do that. On points for one year plus. Our second goal is under the pillar of school climate and culture. We are dedicated to fostering a healthy, safe, and inclusive school environment where learning is valued and celebrated through stronger connections and family and community engagement that will support student achievement behavior and increased attendance. So with climate and culture being a focus, especially when we're looking at those connections, those relationships, developing and furthering those connections and relationships with our students, student to student, staff to student, staff to staff, but also looking at those stronger connections that we've also started to work with in both throughout the district, with the community and community partners, and also with our families to be able to further that. Ultimately, that is going to help us when it comes to raising student achievement, but it's also going to come back and also be increasing attendance as well as really addressing behavior throughout the district. So that is our second goal under the school climate and culture pillar. And our third goal is capacity building. This is, the big focus here is going to be on our early release days as we refine the early release days in our professional development so that we can support our goal of research-based pack, best practices, research-based practices to get that one-year-plus of academic growth and also improving student behavior and attendance through our district and personalized professional development opportunities. Those are the overarching goals that we had. Our schools, as we met in June, started to do their preliminary work on that, to get started on that throughout the summer. They've continued to do that work when we met as a administrative team at our retreat recently at York County Community College. They're starting to bring that work to their school leadership teams, starting to bring that with a plan to also bring that to their full staffs. So the school committee had a chance last Thursday to meet. It was an all-day workshop. I want to thank school committee for dedicating the time. We had all of our schools come in. The elementary schools came in first as they were able to present kind of an overview of where they've been and their strengths as looking at also identified areas of, areas for growth and looking at our plans to be able to do that, to share that. So the school committee's aware, but also in an opportunity to provide feedback and ask questions. Also had an opportunity to meet with the administrators at Sanford Middle School as well. And then after lunch, we were able to meet with SRTC leadership and Sanford High School administration. And then we ended the day meeting with special education, with Stacy and Tammy to do that. So a very productive day, I think, to be able to continue. That's a process we've used in the past, I think, has been helpful to help start our guide of work, to help guide our work going forward. As we look at that, that's going to be, next steps are to continue for our schools to flush out. We're really focusing on not only what we're doing, but what is going to be different? What are we doing different? And also the areas that we're doing, what can we measure? Also be able to measure that so that we can see growth and also see improvement. So a big thank you to the school committee for participating in that goal-setting workshop last week. And my last update is around the opening of schools. That is right around the corner, obviously, as I was talking about. Hiring has been a big focus for us. But the opening of school is coming up shortly. Our fall athletics at the high school began today. We also have marching band getting going at Sanford High School as well. This Wednesday, August 21st, there are some playground exploration events planned for pre-K and kindergarten students. Carl J. Lamb will do that this Wednesday from 4:00 to 5:30 at their playground. Sanford Pride will also go from 4:00 to 5:30 at their playground. And the Margaret Chase's playground exploration is going to be a week from tomorrow. That'll be next Tuesday, the 27th, from 4:30 to 6:00 for that. Also, next Tuesday on the 27th for us is our new teacher orientation. We've got a full day planned with a very similar format. We continue to tweak that based on the feedback that we get every year from our new teachers as far as our onboarding process. So that'll be next Tuesday, the 27th. Starting, the formal program will kick off at 8:00 AM. Also on that day is for Sanford High School, our incoming ninth graders. There'll be a ninth grade orientation for ninth grade students and families. We offer two times for that. The two times are to try to accommodate for families who might be able to, who can't make it in the evening. So there's a 12 o'clock and a 6 o'clock next Tuesday, the 27th, for our incoming ninth graders. Wednesday, the 28th, will be all of our staff will be back. Welcome back for that. That's a full in-service day for staff. That's also when we kick off our open houses. Sanford Middle School will be the first out of the gate on Wednesday, the 28th. They'll be going, their fifth and sixth grade will be having their open house 5:00 to 6:00. And then that'll be followed by the seventh and eighth grade from 6:00 to 7:00. Also Sanford Regional Technical Center will be having their orientation and open house as well on Wednesday, the 28th, and that's from 5:30 to 7:00. Thursday is our second staff in-service day, full in-service day there on Thursday, the 29th. And in the evening of the 29th is when our elementary schools will have their open houses for pre-K through grade four. And our three elementary schools, Carl J. Lamb School, Sanford Pride Elementary, and Margaret Chase Smith will all be going from 5:00 to 6:00 for their open houses. And then following the holiday weekend, our first day of school on September 3rd will be for students in grades one through nine. That's on Tuesday, September 3rd. We will have the pre-K that we operate at SRTC. They'll have their open house on Tuesday, September 3rd, from 5:00 to 6:00. All of the other pre-Ks in our other elementary schools will hold their open houses the same night as the open houses that are going to be there on Thursday, August 29th. SRTC being a little bit different, they will be Tuesday, September 3rd. And then the following day, Wednesday, September 4th, we bring our kindergarten students into the fold. That'll be their first day and that'll go, we'll go first day for all of our students kindergarten through grade 12. And then the following day, Thursday, is when we bring all of our pre-Kers in. That'll be their first day. And so Thursday, September 5th, will be pre-K to grade 12. Also want to mention that SRTC also, their first day is also Tuesday, September 3rd for all of our sending schools. So that's the opening of school update. We'll be pushing that information out further. I know Steve has some information on transportation that he'll be sharing in his update. But we're starting to get everything falling into place. Also wanted to give a big thank you to all of our maintenance and custodial staff as I've been getting around the district, working hard to have all our schools cleaned and ready to go. It's can be challenging because we do use our schools for a lot of summer programming and a lot of activities going on in the summer. So a lot of work and effort takes place to get in and navigate around those areas. But feeling ready good, feeling really good that we are in good shape getting ready for the opening of school. Any questions? Feedback?
I just wanted to mention the workshop that you were talking about was, it's, I think it's really great to hear what the plans are and probably one of the most valuable days, even though it was an all-day event. But that, you know, thanks to the administrators for putting that, pulling that together for us because it really speaks to what they're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, it is a big ask. It's a long day for sure.
Okay, moving on, director's reports. We'll be hearing from Steve Lucie and then Beth Lambert.
Good evening. The first thing tonight I want to update you on is our pre-K partnership with the YMCA. If you remember, the Sanford School Department was awarded a pre-K partnership grant last spring to partner with the YMCA to provide pre-K programming for 16 students at the YMCA. Currently, we have 13 students that are enrolled in the program. The YMCA was hopeful to have secured lead teacher for that position for the program, but learned last Friday that that person has declined that position. And so that position has been reposted again. And the YMCA also has a couple of candidates that we're reaching out to to try to get somebody to come onboard. The classroom space is ready. There is furniture in the room. We have supplies, the techs that they'll need coming along. So if we get the teacher, we'll be in good shape over at the YMCA. So we'll keep you posted on that. And if you know of anybody, we are, send them to the YMCA, send them their way. You could send them my way and we'll get them over there. Summer food service, Sanford's summer food service program served 8,006 breakfast meals and 14,984 lunches for a total of 22,990 meals at eight summer sites this summer. That was an increase of three and a half percent over the previous summer, which is great to see. I think part of that is due to the nicer weather we had this summer compared to last summer with that. Also, part of that is due to the Carpenter Park. If you know Carpenter at all, there's not a whole lot of room for students to consume the meals on-site. And so David was able to allow, to apply with the DOE to allow families to take the meals off-site and consume them. And so they saw a 35% increase at Carpenter Park for this. So thank you to David and his team. They did a really outstanding job. And the forward thinking to ask for that waiver, I think, was really needed, as shown there. Transportation. Rose Dunn, the transportation director, and her staff have been working on adjusting the routes and developing the routes for the upcoming school year. Those routes are completed as of today. Tomorrow, she will welcome staff back. They have their orientation session. And then they're going to do some dry runs to make sure the timing makes sense. And they'll make some final adjustments. And then we will release those routes at 8:00 AM on Wednesday. That is scheduled to go out. Similar to last year, parents will receive an email in Infinite Campus where they will be given their student's ID code. And their student ID will be the username and the password. They'll be able to go right in and see what the time is for the stop with that. Important for parents to know, they will have a general idea of what that timing is on Wednesday. But if they want an updated timing, they could look as we get closer to the start of school. It'll actually give them a closer timeframe for what it's going to be. But just to give the parents a sort of general timeframe with the understanding, the first couple of weeks, timing's off for everybody. In terms of drivers, we're in a similar situation in which we ended the year with Ledgmere in terms of drivers. They are down four drivers for a variety of circumstances. They had two drivers that lost their med card, which means they're unable to drive because of health conditions. And then they had two drivers that moved out of state, which is unfortunate. They do have a driver, two drivers that are in training. They brought on somebody new to drive, but they're still looking for folks. Last week, I met with Rose and the district manager for Ledgmere and said, what are we going to do about this? And so they've come back to us and they said that they have increased their sign-on bonuses that they're offering to folks. And so for fully licensed drivers, they are offering, offering a $5,000 signing bonus. So if you come in, you can drive a bus, it's 5,000. If you need training in order to drive a bus, it's 3,000. And they're painting their monitors a $1,600 sign-on bonus as well to hopefully get some more drivers. They have up their starting wage. And so if you are a fully licensed driver, the starting wage is up to $26 an hour now for drivers and their salary scale has been adjusted along the way. So they're doing their best. You notice the lawn signs are out. They have hired a full-time recruiter who's been onboard for a while that works in Southern Maine to try to recruit folks. They were at our job fair last week. We'll be sending a targeted email out to parents as well in the coming days to see if we can get anybody to come onboard. And I think, lost my train of thought, but I think that was all for transportation. I think that's it.
Steve, will the master list for the routes be online or will parents only be able to access them through Infinite Campus?
Only through Versatrans on Infinite Campus. It's something they can use, they can use to a phone. They can get their information on the phone. We're not printing the master list because we found that that caused more confusion. This is going to be the third year we've used this system and it's been slick. It's really worked for us and parents are used to it. The only thing I would say about transportation, if parents have a question, don't be afraid to call the school or call Ledgmere. They're available to take questions. They're also during open houses, if they have questions in regards to transportation, they've been fielding questions during open house. Ledgmere has done a great job as well as our school administration, stool, administrative assistants, checking daycares, double-checking daycares. Ann Laura and Rose throughout the year, they do multiple checks of data to make sure our addresses are correct. So I think over the years, they've done a much better job in keeping our database up to date. And so I think this system will work well. But if anybody has any questions, send them our way.
Thank you. Beth, it's your turn.
Steve wants me to use my name. Hello, everybody. Just a quick update on professional development from this summer. So we've had several opportunities for staff grades K through 12, some in-person and some virtual. We've had responsive classroom training for staff, restorative practices. Kind of, we did a 101 for new teachers. And then also a more advanced one for restorative practices conversations for teachers that want to move a little further with those practices that we've been working on for the past several years. A really good book study that our math coach Jenna Daniels ran was called, on a book called Rethinking Disabilities in Math, K to 12, and it got rave reviews from the teachers. So she's hoping to do it again. It had some really amazing insights in how to better support our students with special needs in math classes. So I was really excited. I told her I'd buy her all the books she wanted. We also had effective training, effective classroom training for our elementary staff. And just last week, we did Dibbles Training, which will be our new assessment practice that we're using in place of the Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment. So it was, it's going to, instead of taking a half an hour to 45 minutes to assess a student and what they are able to do and what they know, it will be from 5 to 10 minutes. And it will give instant feedback and also actionable interventions so that our teachers and our coaches and interventionists will be able to support those students right away. So we're really excited. I had over 100 staff members from general ed to special ed, teachers, ed techs, administration, join that training last week and they were all very excited about it. So that'll be K to five that we're implementing that. Tomorrow and Wednesday is our training for our Amplify Program. That's our new literacy programming for grades one through five. So I'm really excited about that. Those are two full days from 8:00 to 3:00. And I think all of our elementary, general ed staff are able to make it except for four. And that's because they had family vacations already planned out months ago. So I said, not a problem. We will take care of you when you get back. And then something different for the high school, the middle and high school level, the Bureau of Education and Research, which is a company that offers a lot of professional development, in-person, virtual. You can buy their recordings. They offered a lot of different options for the secondary-level staff for artificial intelligence training. What does it look like and how can you use it in an English classroom, a math classroom, science, social studies, even special ed, I believe? So I offered that just to the grades five through 12 teachers and I had several staff members sign up for that. So I'm anxious to hear what they thought of that training. Today, from 1:00 to 4:00, I had most of our special ed staff in the elementary as well as middle school attend a Bridge to Writing professional development. It's a new program that we were going to pilot, but I think it might be piloted almost across the board to help our special ed staff kind of, kind of bridge basically those writing pieces into the general ed. So they were all very excited about it. The training was wonderful. So I'm really looking forward to seeing that in action. And then now, and so Amplify this week is the last of my summer training. So from here, we'll have a few different trainings during the teacher workshop days. I've got Read 180, which is a program we use in our special ed as well as our MLL classrooms. And as well as language launch training, they're both from the same company. But language launch is for our MLL students. And this is a curriculum that it's the only WIDA-certified curriculum out there. And we are now implementing it grades K to 12. So I'm really excited about that. And we have training for that in a couple of weeks. And then from there, we're already planning October follow-ups from some of our summer training. So any questions? No?
No? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to new business. Now it's Cheryl's turn.
Good evening. So did you say what we're already working on? So subrates. Did you already say the motion or the?
No.
So the subrates, what we did is we actually went across the board looking at all of our subrates and trying to stay competitive and allowing us to have some subs. We always do this at this time of year, every year. And so this will go into effect as soon as school starts. So teacher rates are going up approximately $5 a day. Ed techs are going up approximately $10 a day. The, the ed techs are going up a little more mostly because of getting ready for the minimum wage change law for ed techs. And we want to make sure that we are actually moving closer to that so we don't have to do as big of a jump when we go to that portion in 2026. So we thought we'd do a little bit of extra jump in this one. Our long-term subs is actually part of our union, teachers' union contract on what percentages we do for what items. So that's how that calculates out. And long-term subs for ed techs are the same rate as the daily rate. Nurses, we jumped up a little more because we're having trouble finding nurses in the subs category. So we increased that slightly to try to get a couple of subs to help us out. The custodial rates, food service rates, admin assistant are all based off from the union contract. union contract. And I'm using the probationary rate for experience and then no experience is the prior year probationary rate. I felt that was a reasonable way to do it and then we'll continue to do that every single year. And then it's set on a certain schedule. So I thought, I wanted to have something that we knew would make sense. So, maintenance and grounds, we actually increased that approximately $2 an hour, mostly because we had trouble finding people at the rates we were at prior and hoping that would spark that a little more. Can't really go too much more than 22 at this point due to the current staffing. But we wanted to increase it to try to get some people to possibly apply because we currently don't have any maintenance subs. So that is what I have put forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Do you want to go ahead and?
I make a recommendation to approve the substitute pay rates as presented for the 2024-2025 school year.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Great. Onto the next item, May financials. I feel like it's been so long since I've been here, but it feels like yesterday too. And so we're going to do May and then at the very end, I'm going to try to give you a slight glimpse into June. So currently for, for May, we were at, we're running below budget. The expenses are running approximately 2.1 million under. That's mostly due to the way the percentages work. Because when I look at it, you're, we're running almost the same as we were last year. So I don't understand why the percentages are so, the budget portion of the percentage doesn't seem to be calculated right, I guess. But that's the way we've been doing it all along, so I left it as is. I don't know if it's some timing on a couple of things that maybe got in May the prior year or something. I don't, I couldn't figure, I couldn't find one thing that stood out, let's put it that way. So for revenue, we're running about $1.7 million last, more than last year, and that's mostly due to our subsidy because we got additional subsidies from one year to the other. Everything else is fairly constant. Federal grants, we're running about $2 million worth of revenue and $2 million worth of expenses. So we're billing out as much as we've actually spent. And then the enterprise fund, we're at about $2.6 million in revenue and $2.7 million worth of expense. And that's because nutrition always runs one month behind in revenue. But when we look at it for June, you will be, it's actually in the positive, more revenue than expenses. So we're very happy there. Currently, Esser Funds, we're at about $2 million worth of revenue and $2.2 million worth of expenses. We just billed May in this week or last week. And so we are really getting caught up and it will be in the audit that all that will be receivable. So we're looking good there. And other funds, revenue at a .7 million and expenses of 1.1 million. And of course, the Ruskriet kind of skews that data a little bit because we got the revenue last year and the expense wasn't until this year, which is over a half a million. So when we're looking at the different cost centers, Article One is running below budget, about $196,000. So that looks great. Seems to be running pretty consistent with last year. Special, special, I was going to say special revenue. Special education is running fairly below on expenses and I think this is some of what's skewing the data on the first page. We had a lot of outside placements that got paid in June because of the new change in methodology with the outside placements. There were some bills that got, I think they were having a slight disagreement on the rate the state set. So they were holding their bills for a little bit to see if they could talk them into changing that. And so then we finally got a bunch of bills in. So we got like three months worth of bills on a couple of the outside placements and we paid all of that in June. The career and technical education is running below budget and some of that is still due to that one person that we have that is now getting paid as a teacher and not as a service. And it's, you like that much money, but it's actually because he, he gets paid all the way through August and then it gets retroed back into the prior year once August hits. So I accrue that salary. So all the summer salaries get posted in June, but we can't do that until after the last payroll in August. So once you actually do that, we'll, we'll be probably right at, I'm estimating pretty close to exactly at budget. Article Four is running just slightly below budget. That one is at, running no unusual expenses there and so I'm not worried about that one. Article Five is running slightly below budget also. That one had a bunch of expenses also that hit June, some curriculum items that Beth was purchasing for books. And so some of that comes in and it will increase that line. Article Six, which is our system administration, is running slightly below budget. Some of that is due to a couple of expenses that came in closer to the end of the year. Article Seven also is running right slightly above budget and that is due to mostly legal expense and one health insurance that got changed that the other person did not have it. So it did change that slightly, but I think by the end of the year, we'll be pretty darn close to break even. And we also paid some additional on advertisement, trying to get some of these positions hired. Article Eight is the one that I kind of talked about throughout the year or close the last couple of times, saying I was concerned we'd go over budget. We are over budget. We had a feeling we would be slightly, a lot of it's homeless. And then we fully extended our pre-K grant. So some of the funds had to go into this year into local budget. So we are going to be slightly over budget for Article Eight in the June financials. But I'll talk about that in a minute. Article Nine, we are running below budget. Most of that is the, the budget is slightly skewed due to the Willard Building last year. They are looking really good this year and coming within budget. Article Ten, of course, is right at budget. That one's makes it easy to predict because we already know what our schedules are. And Article Eleven is running approximately $6,000 below budget. Adult Education is running about $11,000 below budget and that was due to the changes that were made within that department. So looking ahead for 2024 and estimating year end, my estimation right now, running it today, I believe we're going to have a draw in fund balance of $500,000 to $700,000, which is less than the predicted in the budget of $1,029,857. So after it's all said and done, we're going to be withdrawing less money from the fund balance that we expected of approximately anywhere from $500,000 to $300,000 less. That's my estimate. And that's of course, it's because we are predicting what accrued summer salaries will be when it's all said and done. So as long as I didn't miss an account or add an account in, that's where I'm predicting.
Okay, thank you very much. I make a recommendation to approve the April 2024 financials as presented.
It's May.
It says April. I crossed off and said May. So did you.
I second the recommendation to approve the May 2024 financials as presented.
Any discussion? All in?
I was just going to say, you know, I love this. Thank you for the time and explain, explanation. We don't, no guessing. We know what's going on and quick and brief, love it. But that's it. No real discussion.
All in favor? All in favor?
Thank you, Cheryl. Next up is, excuse me, discussing naming rights.
Yes, the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation had a campaign recently where they were looking to name the trophy case at Sanford High School after Hall of Fame, main basketball Hall of Fame coach, player Bruce McKinnon. The recommendation is to name the trophy case, we'll name it the, one second here. It would be called the Sanford High School Athletic Achievement Showcase is the official sign that will go up. Named in honor of SHS basketball coach Bruce McKinnon. And so that will be named down outside, at the High School and Technical Center outside of Partners Bank Gymnasium. It'll be named there and then off to the right will be what we've done with other naming areas with a plaque, a small plaque that will also include a QR code for people to be able to go and read more of the information. So that is what I'm bringing forward here per policy. That has to be approved by the school committee. So looking to accept a donation from Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation, approve a request to name the trophy case at Sanford High School in the name of Bruce McKinnon as presented.
I make a recommendation to accept a donation from Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation and approve a request to name the trophy case at Sanford High in the name of Bruce McKinnon as presented.
All in favor? All in favor?
And just for clarification, it's on September 4th at 4:00 PM at Sanford High School?
That is, yes, that's when the ceremony is scheduled for. It would be Wednesday, September 4th, 4 o'clock, right at the High School and Technical Center. So we will be, now that that's been officially approved, we will now be getting those, that information out to be able to have that celebration. The understanding is Bruce and his family will be in attendance, which is awesome.
I do see it being advertised on the legacy site, so that's great.
Okay, moving forward, we don't have any old business. Moving on to resignations, retirements, staff appointments, staff transfers, and we've got a lot, staff nominations.
Sure. So we have a lot since our last meeting on June 13th. So resignations and retirements to announce. Jody Cinco's, and I will name these and list these. I think it's important to be able to list those throughout, if people could bear with me. Jody Cinco, second shift custodian at the High School and Technical Center. Lindsay Herzig is a second grade teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Barbara Dumont is an ed tech at Sanford Middle School. Carissa Lurion and Jesse Giles, kitchen personnel at MCS. Sarah Geniswick, a science teacher at the high school. Mike Fallon is head football coach at Sanford High School. Tony Beddel is an ed tech two at the middle school. Carla LaRue, a literacy ed tech at MCS. Keith Gendron as an eighth grade boy soccer coach. Daniel Turman as an ed tech at the Carl J. Lamb. Amanda Doyle as principal at Sanford High School. Trish Leet, assistant principal, Carl J. Lamb School. Katie Schindler, career exploration coordinator at SRTC. Lauren Brown is a fourth grade teacher at MCS. Cindy Remick retired as a literacy ed tech over at Margaret J. Smith School. Jake Mills is a social studies teacher at Sanford High School. Sonia Dorr, ed tech one at Carl J. Lamb. Anita Levine, digital design instructor at SRTC. Catherine Boudreaux, math teacher at the high school. Mark Buzzino as assistant football coach at the high school. Alicia Gay is a sixth grade teacher and girls lacrosse coach at Sanford Middle School. Samantha Farley is an ed tech at the middle school. Diane Emerson-Home, health occupations teacher at SRTC. John White is the Student Success Center Support and Transition Ed Tech at the high school. Ruby LaChance is the field hockey coach at the middle school. Taylor Bolio, ed tech at Carl J. Lamb. Stephanie Wilson is a ed tech at the middle school. And May Witt as a kitchen personnel MCS with that. Couple to make note of, Amanda Doyle, principal at Sanford High School resigned. She has taken the assistant superintendent position in RSU 57. So we're very happy for Amanda and wishing her luck in her new position. And Trish Leet, assistant principal at Carl J. Lamb. Trish has retired after a long career in Sanford, a lot of different positions, both in the classroom, also kind of as a teaching principal back at Lafayette School and most recently as a assistant principal at Carl J. Lamb School. I want to give a big thank you to Trish for that. Some appointments that we also have to announce, some second shift custodians to announce. Louise Ma Doso at the MCS. Manuel Nagola at Sanford Middle School. Nathaniel LeBrec at the middle school and Lori Stone at Sanford Pride Elementary. Erica Scarono is the Visual and Performing Arts Department Chair at the middle school. Charlene Foss as an ed tech at the high school. Elia Studer as an ed tech at Carl J. Lamb. I think we have, Lee should be in a different, we should have Lee in the staff nominations. So she's in the wrong area. Lee Perkins, grade four teacher at MCS. Lori Morse as a kindergarten literacy ed tech at Carl J. Lamb. Caitlin Gardner is a admin assistant at Sanford High School. Carly Yarian as a admin assistant at the high school. Sandra Hewitt and Emily Preventure helped us out as substitutes and as a extended school year teacher for our past summer program. Susie McDonald, special ed behavior ed tech at MCS. Andy Kay as extended school year director substitute. Denise Bergeron, ed tech two at Carl J. Lamb. Ben Tarrell and Connor Pickering as theater technicians at the Performing Arts Center. Michelle St. Pierre is kitchen personnel at Sanford Pride. Angela Keppner as a kindergarten literacy ed tech at MCS. Megan Kylie, ed tech three, virtual learning coordinator at Sanford High School. And Amanda Woodward in the Performing Arts Center as a Fent manager. And Kaylee Blakeney, early childhood ed tech at SRTC. Also have a number of transfers to announce. Rachel Legear going from Title I teacher at Carl J. Lamb to kindergarten teacher at Pride. Katherine McCall going from self-contained teacher to IEP coordinator, C.J.L. Danielle Little, ed tech in the resource room to self-contained at MCS. Ryan Geary as JV volleyball coach to varsity volleyball coach. Flora Joyelle, ed tech in the self-contained to ed tech three in the resource room at Lamb. Michelle Payer moving from a grade one teacher to a grade two teacher at Sanford Pride. Steve Brown moving back from the assistant facilities director to the head custodian back at MCS. Noel Lee is a second, from a grade two teacher to a health teacher at Pride. Caleb Molten moving from a Esser position admin assistant to a admin assistant position at the middle school. Josh Allen moving from a grade five teacher to a grade eight math teacher. Pam Snow, resource room ed tech to a resource room ed tech three at the middle school. Donna Goodrich as ed tech self-contained to a literacy ed tech at MCS. Trish Kaplowitz, ed tech two resource room to an ed tech three resource room at MCS. Sarah Deschambault as, from a grade one teacher at MCS to a coach interventionist position at Carl J. Lamb. Sally Corliss from attendance coordinator to the career exploration coordinator at SRTC in Sanford High School. Kathleen Meyer, self-contained teacher to long-term sub teacher. Kristy Richards moving from the Stronger Connections Grant Coordinator at the middle school to Carl J. Lamb's assistant principal. Linda Stone- Linda Stone from district manager to production kitchen manager at the high school. Angela Mitchell, moving from production distribution kitchen manager to district kitchen manager. Daphne Winchenbaugh, kitchen personnel, moving from three hours a day to 5.25 hours a day at MCS. Colin Harris, being able to return Colin. Colin was in a seventh grade ESER position that was eliminated last year, but able to move into a fifth grade teacher position. Rochelle Randall, an Ed Tech 2 self-contained, to an Ed, an Ed Tech self-contained to Ed Tech 2 in the resource room at MCS. Matt Kramer, who was in an ESER position that was eliminated, was able to move into an English teacher position at the high school. Amanda Marsters, who was also an Ed Tech in an eliminated ESER position, was able to move to an Ed Tech 1 at MCS. David Ekram, who was, whose position was an ESER position that was eliminated as a behavior interventionist, is able to move into the stronger connections grant coordinator. James Bennett, who was in an SRTC Ed Tech ESER position, moving to an Ed Tech 3 position at the high school. Rhea McCoy, who was an Ed Tech 3 in the library at C.J.L., moving to a special ed teacher position at C.J.L. Christine Patno, a literary Ed Tech ESER that was moving from the ESER to the local budget. And then there are a number of staff nominations also for hiring. Mackenzie Smith as an art teacher at Sanford Pride. Josh Hisong as an instructional band teacher at the middle school. Holly Brown returns as a grade two classroom teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Lindsay Jenkins, grade one teacher at Sanford Pride. Tracy Gibson hired as the principal of Sanford High School. George Rubin Christie as school counselor at Sanford Middle School. Taylor Nigren, fourth grade teacher at MCS. Sarah Nickerson, school counselor at Sanford High School. Anna Silva, social studies teacher at Sanford High School. Lyndon Hollins, chemistry physical science teacher at the high school. Matt Gertrun, math teacher at the high school. Abby Hansen, sixth grade ELA teacher at the middle school. Beth Baldarali, special ed teacher self-contained at Carl J. Lamb. Pam Legear, first grade teacher at Margaret J. Smith School. Amy Turgeon, digital design instructor at SRTC. Amy Demers, moving from a long-term sub-position to a special ed teacher position in the resource room at Carl J. Lamb. Lisa Silva, also moving from Ed Tech self-contained to a special ed teacher at the high school. Eric Stevens is a bridge teacher, Bridge teacher at Bridge. And Jenna Holmes is a health occupations instructor at SRTC. Just usually for all of our new staff nominations for teaching positions, I always try to make it a point to meet with all of those teachers individually. And so I enjoy that and also want to report that very impressed and very pleased with the people that we've been able to come back and fill into these positions for that. Even though I have the ability to hire in the summer, right now I still would like to move forward so that we can still have the school committee assigned to accept these nominated professional staff as presented. If someone would be willing to make the motion.
I will make a motion to accept the nominated professional staff as presented.
I second the motion. Any discussion?
Just wanted to clarify that Ryan Geary is football or volleyball?
Volleyball.
Okay, thank you.
If I said football.
No, you said it correctly.
It is football?
No, it is volleyball. Yeah, my paper says volleyball, so I just want, sorry. I don't want to move.
Yeah, if I'd said, if, I was gonna say, if I said football, I apologized to Ryan.
All in favor? All in favor?
And welcome. Thanks for joining.
Okay, moving on to policies and procedures.
Okay, I have a number of policies for you tonight that are a result in the changes in the rules for Title IX. Title IX has traditionally dealt with just sexual harassment. And with the new rules that came out in April, that has expanded a bit to include sex-based discrimination and harassment, not just sexual harassment. So I'm gonna try to summarize this for you without getting too much in the weeds. So the first thing that's changed is Policy AC, which is our non-discrimination, equal opportunity, and affirmative action policy. The updated policy aligned with the Title IX regulations effective August 1st, 2024, expands and clarifies protections against discrimination and harassment. The updated policy more explicitly includes, and this is the part that was added, sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, and pregnancy-related conditions. And so that's our discrimination, equal opportunity, affirmative action policy that's been updated. Underneath that, our harassment, our student harassment policy has been updated, which is ACAA. Now with that policy, ACAA, there is an investigation complaint procedure that was previously in place. We have taken that policy, that procedure, and broken it into two parts. The first part deals with student discrimination and harassment, general student discrimination and harassment. That's the first one, ACAA-R1. And the second one deals with Title IX, which is student sex discrimination and harassment complaints. The reason why we've broken them apart is because there is a set of rules we have to follow when we investigate Title IX complaints. And by separating the two, it should help our administrators better clarify what avenue in which they need to investigate. Underneath that, we have harassment of employees, ACAB. That policy has been changed to include what I mentioned in Policy AC. And once again, we've broken apart those policies, those procedures for investigation so we can investigate harassment complaints and then those sexual-based harassment complaints which need to be investigated following the Title IX procedures. The procedures that have been updated, they've all come from Drummond-Woodson guidance. They're pretty standard. I have not changed anything that did not come from legal counsel with that. I think these new procedures that are in place are going to be a little bit of an adjustment for our administrative team. And you may hear in the news that several states and universities have tried to stop these rules from being enacted. The guidance we're getting from the, our legal counsel is to move forward and implement these procedures the way they have been designed. So that's the first part for you. Any questions on that? First reading, yep, yep.
And just one of the things we're looking at is provided that the school committee does give their initial approval, we do have a meeting with our administrators this Thursday coming up for us to be able to help, be able to show those changes and updates to help better train them to make sure that we are aligned with the changes.
Yep.
Do we get a breakdown, like, can we get more? So I was looking and reading, but I don't know before what it is now. I feel, I don't know if you've given that to me and I didn't look at all the links, all the connections to all the pieces.
The executive summary has that for you, and I'll make sure you had that. I noticed tonight it was not in the agenda. It came, it came through the school committee update, but it didn't come through the agenda, so I can actually give that to you tonight.
Okay, just so, yeah, because I was trying to look at this quickly and I'm like, I should probably spend a little time, so, thank you.
Also, just for clarification with the policies, as the school committee, we are following the law, so you're bringing to us what the law is. We are not adding to what the law is.
Correct.
So it is important for us to be informed of what the law is, but it's not necessarily because we have specific feedback pertaining to the policy.
Correct, this is a, this, these policies and procedures are standard, following the law, making sure of following the civil rights laws. And so these are pretty straightforward. That's why I said I pretty much took what the Drummond-Woodson had and put our, our structures and, you know, we're the, we're a school committee, we're on a board, and that type of changes. But these come directly from Drummond-Woodson, yeah, yeah. The other piece that come out of the Title IX rule update was in regards to pregnant students. And you'll notice Policy JIE, it's replacing our old policy, JFE, JFF, which was pregnant and married students, which was really an outdated policy. The new policy that's being proposed, which follows the Title IX regulations, are aimed to prevent discrimination and ensure equal educational access for pregnant students. With this policy, staff are now required to inform the Title IX coordinator that we have a pregnant student, and the Title IX coordinator is to make sure to coordinate, to make sure that we're making modifications necessary by the individual. And that goes while the student's in pregnant as well as afterwards. So it could be changes in schedule, excuse, leaves of absence, breaks, all of those things that, which, when I read it, pretty much things we do now to support the student. That's the last update in regards to Title IX. Anybody have any questions about the pregnant student policy? And the final policy update for this evening is Policy JFCK, which is our student cellphones, smartwatches, and electronic device use policy. That updated policy, the big change in that policy is that it aims to ban cellphones from schools, student use cellphone, student use of cellphones during the school day. Currently, at our elementary schools, students, the phones are off and away. At the middle school, they can use them before school and after school. And at the high school, they can use them at passing time and they can use them at lunchtime. This policy goes a step further to eliminate the use of cellphones during the school day. This is just a first read to open that dialogue with the community. Once we, you guys opened the discussion, I think the original plan we had talked about was potentially sending surveys and looking for more guidance on where we'd like to go next with that this evening. So Mr. Nelson, I'm not sure if you had anything to add?
No, this, the idea of the cellphone policy did come out of a workshop that the school committee had this summer back in early July, where that was something that was looked at. At that time, there was interest from the school committee in looking at following a similar policy that another school district in Maine had put forward, RSU 1. And so that is something that we had done with the idea of knowing that any policy that's approved needs to have two readings, and those readings need to be spaced out at least two weeks in between. So this was, as Steve mentioned, an idea for us to be able to put that into place. And then with the idea that if it is approved tonight on first reading, it would then be able to also take the will of the school committee as terms of a process for us going forward to then make sure what other things that we'd want to have for information or data or survey results for us to then have that before there would be a second reading. That was the original intent that we had as we met back in early July of looking at that. So knowing that this has been our first meeting since, we do have two school committee meetings coming up in September. And if we do that, the first one would be September, we've got the Labor Day holiday, so that bumps us to September 9th. And then we do follow up right the following week on the 16th. Most of those meetings are focused on the opening of school and hearing reports from our schools, but from a policy standpoint, we wanted to have this meeting to get first readings out for that. I think you'll see the Title IX policies that we talked about will return on the agenda for September 9th as a second reading. The intent right now, at least for the student use of cellphone changes, was probably to put that on the agenda, see what the will of the school committee is going forward, and also what we'd want to also do for next steps to get information to be able, before that policy does get to a second reading. We don't have to do that either. Yep, that is also an option as well.
Steve, what are your thoughts on the cellphone policy? Are, are we going to survey folks? What?
My thought would be to, if we look to approve the first reading tonight, to make that, open that discussion, would be to send surveys out to students, staff, parents. We have those surveys, draft surveys, that if we decide to go that direction, we can get those out. And then I think we look at those results and see what comes back. And then that could guide our decision to go back and rework the policy or move forward with the proposed policy. But I think that would be information, helpful, useful information for the school committee to have before we make any final decisions, because I think it's important to get their input with that.
Sorry, and we also have the cellphone policy, I mentioned earlier that we would be talking about the Title IX policies this Thursday at our administrative team meeting. We also have plans, especially at the middle school and high school level, to talk about the cellphone policy with our administrators as well to get their feedback.
Just because I, a little bit of confusion, sorry, I'm still learning the process. If we are not accepting of how the policy is laid out, do we not approve the first reading?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
That, that's an option, yep, that's an option.
Like if we're, because I, if we're not, yeah, if we're not ready to move forward with how it's worded, would we not? Or if we need to do more research or whatever, we're not ready to, would we just not approve of the first reading?
Yep, that's an option.
I thought my understanding was that we don't have to approve the first read. My understanding is we don't have, it's just a discussion, you're informing us.
You don't? No, I don't, I.
He's just giving us information, we're saying, thank you for the information. Now we'll talk. Yeah.
The will, this was. Remember, this came from the workshop on July 8th. At that time, going forward, there was interest for us to develop a policy with the idea that that would get the thing started. We can also get it started without a new policy and a first reading as well, if that could be something else that, this is giving us something as a starting point for us to be able to refer back to.
Yeah, but I think, Melissa, the first reading, it just gets it out there. And then sometimes what happens with policies is we give feedback, and that's when we go back to the process and we adjust the wording and we, and we find, yep, yep. Then we do another reading, and at that time, if we don't approve the second reading, that's when you can say, no, I don't approve the second reading. But this just opens that conversation to allow for feedback and the conversation to start.
This is a more of like giving your stamp of approval to move forward, to explore it more. Not that you approve it, but like, yeah, keep, keep doing the work that you're doing, and then they'll bring it back to a reading, and then you can say, yes or no, you don't agree with the policy.
And I would, just for the sake of discussion pertaining to the first reading, I wholeheartedly agree with the importance of getting the feedback from stakeholders. However, I think that we need to be cautious when we're dealing just in surveys. I think there should be a threshold set of the return number of surveys before we were to take that data into consideration for decision-making, much like, you know, when you're voting on the budget, you know, in the charter, there's a certain threshold that you have to meet in order for it to be valid results. Because I do think, you know, all those surveys is an excellent way to get feedback. It's not necessarily always representative of the entire body if you're not getting enough surveys back. So I think we would need to determine what that threshold looks like from a return rate on the surveys before we were to take into consideration that voice in its entirety.
And that, and that's good feedback, and that was, is there seemed to be a lot of energy about this back in July. I think the concern was, we were not in school, people were on vacation. So I think that was the idea of wanting to be able to then wait till people return back to school, and when they did, we felt like the return rate and the interest in that would be much higher than it might have been in July and August.
And I guess I would just say, how, you know, with, some of the conversation that happened from the workshop or what sort of triggered the workshop in July was really around sort of a lot of, there's other districts in the state and nationwide that have sort of taken a stance on the cellphones, knowing that there's a lot of behavioral issues that come from cellphones, a lot of just overall drama from the cellphones. Just, it's just a lot that impacts the school day because of the cellphones, so that was really where the workshop, in my opinion, where the workshop sort of like triggered more conversation and why this policy sort of wants us to look into it, knowing that a lot of families more, you know. a lot of families more, you know, are, we're going to hear from a lot of families about the comfort of the safety and all that, but also knowing that education is definitely being impacted, for sure. And I would say definitely at the middle school level, but that's in my opinion, so... And I guess also there is, I don't want to say it's a study, but I think that there's like a nationwide push, and I may say the phrase word, like, "Wait till eighth," meaning wait till eighth grade for cellphones for students, but don't quote me on that one.
To piggyback on what you said, it's not just about the behaviors, it's also about mental health and social, emotional, just health overall for our kids, and the impact that social media and cellphones in general have on their development.
Can I be reminded who here on the school committee sits on the policy committee?
And Steve, what is in front of the day this evening is Policy JFK, which is the Student Use of Cellphones, Smartwatches, Electronic Devices. There is a JFK-R, which is more of the procedural piece, and that isn't there in terms of being able to look at that yet. This is more of just coming back in terms of the outright ban for that.
Correct. The thought process was to get some feedback from stakeholders before we, because if the feedback comes back and says, "No, we don't want to change our policy, we would like the way it is," then we don't want to put the work in to do the procedures until we know this. So, that was the thought process behind us, sort of, not putting the cart before the horse.
Thank you, Steve. Moving forward...
We're going to take no action tonight?
No.
On any of them?
No.
There isn't action.
I'm sorry, my understanding is that we've never had to vote on a first reading formally. It's more of like, yeah, keep, go for it, keep, keep working on it.
We do, no, we vote formally.
Vote formally.
We do vote formally on the first reading, it doesn't, I think there's something missing, but I'm not, I'm not ready to vote. I need to do more research on all of these personally, so I don't know if I oppose or abstain, or, you know, so I...
All right, if we're going to take a vote, I make a motion to... So, hold on, I'm sorry, there is something missing there on the agenda.
Yes, it does.
I'm sorry. To be fair, there's usually a recommendation...
At the bottom of it.
At the bottom, to be able to accept the first reading of the policies. Sometimes that can be done collectively, as a group, or they can be broken up individually. So, my apologies, when I was looking for action, there was none that was listed in there, which is a omission on our part. Usually, when we're on a first reading, there is the action to take. Nothing becomes official, as I mentioned, this just gets into going forward with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of all of the policies presented this evening.
I second that. So, if, you just don't, okay.
Well, we can have discussion.
Right. Any discussion?
Just again, that I just feel unclear about if you approve the first reading, what that actually means, and if you're ready to accept the policy as it is, or, you know, so for me, I'm just going to abstain or object or whatever.
Okay. All in favor?
Is there anything, thank you, is there anything that the school committee wishes as we, between now and getting to a second reading? Is there any information that you're looking for, for us to be able to bring forward? Or are you okay with us kind of separating those out? There's the Title IX policies that we're moving, but also in regards to student cellphone, do you want us to continue to move forward with the plan to be able to try to get feedback from our stakeholders for that?
For me, the Title IX is federal. It's as-is.
Yeah.
You can read it verbatim, you know, I mean, because we don't have any authority over that. If we personally, as school committee members, have an opinion on it, we need to take it to the state DOE and the federal DOE. We will not be adjusting those policies, in my opinion. There won't be any amendments to those policies, they will be laid out as-is. As far as the student cellphone policy goes, I think, you know, we would all be in favor of continuing with the stakeholder conversations, you know, and we will just have to determine where our comfort level is pertaining to making a decision based on the feedback that we get from the various stakeholders.
Is there anything about your comfort level that you'd like us to be able to do to help you make that decision, or be able to do that? Just looking for a little clarity amongst what our plan is going forward.
I mean, I'd like to see, from a survey perspective, you know, first, I'd like to see in prior surveys, what is our return rate from a percentage-wise, because I feel like it would be unkind of me to ask for 75% if we're averaging 40%, you know? So, I think that we need to know, you know, in the past, how much feedback have we gotten, and what is the realistic expectation for feedback?
And for me, the feedback from the administrators will be important, and you said you're meeting with them tomorrow?
Thursday.
Okay, this week. Just because, you know, that, to me, is going to be very important of how they feel in this policy. Obviously, the families as well, and I would, you know, if we could get the survey rolling, I think that would be helpful, or at least at the beginning of the school. But where I, I'll just put it out there right now, where I stand today is I would like, you know, when we sort of talked about like the middle school for it to def, I would definitely be more in favor of the middle school having a very tight cellphone policy versus the high school. I feel like if they could, if we could tighten up in the sort of like the cellphone hotels, and it being a very consistent, that you enter the room, the cellphone goes away, and then we're there to learn. But again, really would love to hear from the administrators more about that and the families.
And I would just, I don't respectfully disagree, I do respectfully, but I don't want the administrators to have a greater voice than our classroom teachers. So, I want our classroom teachers to be able to weigh in on this, and I don't want the administrators, although I appreciate their voice, I don't want them speaking for the teachers in a generalized sense as to maybe what's more convenient, or what's easier, or I want to hear from the people in the classroom that are dealing with this in their everyday life.
I would agree with that completely.
Yeah, I would agree as well, and I think maybe even having the survey going out to the teachers separately.
Anonymously.
Yeah. And then, the families one separate.
Okay. Steve, that's the good guidance for us. Great, thank you.
So, for, just one second, I didn't, I probably should have read the law prior to coming today, but I haven't really viewed it. I knew it was coming, and there's several things that I have looked into. So, for me, that's, that's what it is, like, I would just want to compare that. And then, again, what was A versus B, and I, it might have been the link I didn't, from the last update, so, for the first one, and then, I agree with the cellphones, we need to talk to teachers and just do more digging.
In terms of the policy committee, are these the dates that you had, I'm sorry?
The 9th and 16th.
Those are the dates that you guys meet?
Oh, policy is the, oh, no.
It says future meetings.
Yes, yep, on the bottom of that, yep, on the bottom of that agenda, yes.
And we have two representation, two representatives from the school committee. Are you, if another person attends, does that mean, like, we have a quorum, we can't, can't be there? Or can another member attend also?
Another member can attend, because that is a meeting that we are posting.
Okay.
That goes out to everyone to be able to come back and do that. So, under those circumstances, yes.
All right, thank you.
And on our website, the policy committee schedule is listed, as well as the agenda, and then the notes, once we do have the meeting, and you can go back and see the previous meetings that we've had as well with that.
And one of the things we try to do with that schedule is we try to align that with our school committee meetings, so that we can continue to take those policies that, like you see in front of you this evening, are those that have had some changes, that we're getting recommend, that are recommendations coming. But Steve has also done really good work to also look at policies that we've had for a long time, working our way through. Some of those are going to be able to be updated with just some slight word changes, and some of them may be obsolete now. So, that's the other thing that we're trying to do with the schedule that we have with the policy committee, that it kind of aligns with the actual school committee meetings, so that we can follow that two-reading process. So, that's kind of how it starts, is starts in policy committee, and then moves on to the first agenda for first reading, and then on to a second one. That, remember, it has to be at least two weeks apart, minimum, two weeks apart.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Okay, moving on, we do not have any items for future agenda?
I...
We do?
Well, I do, but I have to say that I forget, and I didn't write down the policy that I wanted us to talk about, so I will wait till the next school committee meeting. So, I guess I do, but I don't, sorry.
I know which one you're talking about, but I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know the J... dot, dot, dot.
Right.
And I also know at our, at a meeting, when we were looking at the school calendar, there was also talking about snow days, was something else that people were bringing up to be able to look at that.
That was me. The way the school calendar fell, if you bring up June, we would want, we were, we were talking about the number of snow days not extending us past June 20th, which is a Friday. So, the calendar is bringing us a little bit later in the school year with the start of school after Labor Day. Currently, we do not have a remote snow day policy, so we need to talk about that.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So, right now, if we used all of the five days, it's putting us into June 23rd, June 24th, is that what you're saying? Oof, yeah, that would be rough.
If my memory serves me correctly, we can have three, and that will bring us to Friday the 20th. We'll want to fact-check that when we're talking about, potentially talking about virtual snow days, but I believe that to be true.
Yeah, the, the other thing that goes around with that is the Juneteenth holiday. So, that's something that I know we'd like to be able to make sure that our school is out prior to the Juneteenth holiday. And how we've kind of handled this in the past is, the guidance that I've used is that remote snow days have not been something that have been a, a big desire coming from our, from stakeholders. That being said, we've also not had a lot of snow days either. And so, I think we've always held the idea of we could use remote snow days, but a lot of that would be kind of getting a sense of what is, how many snow days are we using, and how far is that pushing us back with that? It's been usually the idea of, we don't want to go beyond the Juneteenth holiday, and so with that, we'd want to make sure that we do have remote snow day options for us to be able to utilize to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Yeah, that, we can also do that, we can do that another time, too, to be able to do it. Yep. I think trying to be able to look at what the policy is to be able to also bring forward for a future, future review and future agendas.
Okay, so in that case, we will move on to calendar announcements.
Just wanted to make the announcement, this meeting was originally scheduled for next Monday, the 26th, when we had met back in June in looking to discuss that. The 26th did not work for a number of school committee members, we would not have a quorum for that particular day, so we pivoted and rescheduled Monday, the 26th, meeting till tonight with that. So, our next school committee meeting will not be until Monday, September 9th. Remember, the first Monday in September is the Labor Day holiday, so that usually bumps us back to the second Monday, which is the 9th. The third Monday will be the 16th. We'll also have back-to-back weeks with school committee meetings, and those will really be focused on the opening of school, as we'll kind of divide up the different schools and programs to be able to report out on that. Also, I did go over the, I did go over the opening of school timeline and events coming up. Just a reminder, new teacher orientation Tuesday, the 27th, and in-service days for staff, teachers and ed techs will be on Wednesday, the 28th, and Thursday, the 29th. We have a typo there in the agenda, I didn't catch that, my apologies, but those will be in-service days for that. And those are all the calendar announcements.
If there isn't anything anybody else wants to say, then I recommend that we adjourn this meeting at 7:26 PM. All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you, everybody.